And we will bring the City of West Melbourne Regular Council Meeting to order. It is Monday, August 4th, 2025. Please stand and say the pledge with me. We'll have a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with complete justice for all.
All right, thank you. You may be seated. Welcome to the City of West Melbourne's Regular Council Meeting tonight. Members of the public are welcome to speak on any topic, whether it is on tonight's agenda or on any issue that is important to you. Each person that wishes to speak should complete a speaker's card, which are located by the door, and submit it ahead of time to the city clerk who sits at the end of the dais. After you have been recognized to speak, please use the microphone at the podium and clearly state your name and address for the record. Please address all of your comments to the city council rather than to individual members. Direct all questions to the chair. Speakers will be given up to three minutes. All right, thank you. All are pleasant. We are missing Mr. Bentley. He is out of town. Otherwise, all are present and accounted for. Can I have a motion and a second? Ms. Adams?
I'll make a motion to excuse the deputy mayor.
All right, thank you. Mr. Frampton?
A second.
All right, we have a motion to excuse from Ms. Adams, and we have a second from Mr. Frampton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. All right, we'll get on with our... There are no presentations or proclamations, no modifications. We'll go right into public hearings, and it'll be Kristi.
Item B on the consent agenda?
Has been polled, so when we get to the consent agenda, it'll only be item A. Thank you very much. Only. Thank you. Public hearings, Kristi, and this is the annexation of 0.67 acres. Thank you.
Yes, if you could give me one minute to load it up, please. So this is Agenda Item 5A, and for the public record, I'm Kristi Fisher. I'm the city's planning director. And part of our role is to look at the requests that have come in from developers against the city's comprehensive plan, the floor statutes and other items, and then we present it to the Planning and Zoning Board and the city council, obviously for city council's determination. So this has to do with a property that is next to Falcon Ridge. It's on the west side, but it's a little triangle, and it's that area that on this aerial shows up in a red triangle. It's been outside of the city limits, even though Falcon Ridge was in, and even though we had some of the property that's sort of northeast of that diagonal to that that was in. It's a small piece of property, 0.67 acres, and in 2005, Falcon Ridge developer did not purchase this property, and the original owner, Fulter, retained it. This parcel was contemplated to have signage, but that didn't occur, still vacant, and as we're going to talk about in the development agreement, the possible use of the property would be for the city. As we do with any annexation, we notify surrounding property owners. We didn't receive any phone calls, emails, or visits. As you all know, part of the requirement for annexation is an adjacency requirement, so we put this map together, showed the red triangle next to the colored area. Those are city limits, and we can't create an enclave. This actually reduces a little bit of an enclave. With this property, there's no utility improvements proposed because the site is isolated and it's not meant to be built on. If the site is dedicated to the city, the city would determine a future urban use such as a welcome sign, dog park, or other use such as leaving it as conservation. With any annexation, we have to assign the comprehensive plan designation and a zoning, and that will occur at a future meeting. So in conclusion, staff is recommending, if council so wants to do it, to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2025-18, annexing the approximate 0.67 acre property. And the photo is just meant to show you that on the left-hand side of that area, you have like a bank that's for that Melbourne Tillman Water Control District, and that's how you would get to the property. There's not any paved road or any other way to get there. The applicant for this request is in the audience, and they can probably answer any, you know, other questions you might have. But like I said, we answer sort of those technical questions of whether this property's eligible to be annexed. And I'm trying to answer any questions you have, and if the city attorney could help us by reading the title of the ordinance, please.
Madam Mayor, this is ordinance number 2025-18, in accordance of the City of West Melbourne, Pervara County, Florida, annexing by voluntary possession a parcel of land approximately 0.67 plus or minus acres in size, located approximately 2,457 feet south of the intersection of New Haven Avenue and Coastal Lane immediately west of Falcon Ridge subdivision, east of I-95 and south of FDOT I-95 retention pond, and as more fully described herein, finding that the area being annexed is reasonably compact and contiguous to the city, that the annexation of the property does not create an enclave, and that the annexation of the property otherwise complies with Florida law, amending the corporate brownies of the city to provide for the incorporation of real property described herein, providing for filing of the revised city boundaries with the Department of State, providing for repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do you want to do the quasi-judicial warning while you're here?
Certainly. So following the annexation, assuming that you approve it, we will have a application for comp plan and rezoning. Those are... Or the rezoning is quasi-judicial, which means that you have to consider the evidence as it's presented to you either by staff or in the staff report and make your decision therein. You can also hear from testimony from the public to the extent that it's fact-based and make your determination based off that. And you can... You must disclose any communications you've had about the application, whether it be with the developer or anybody outside of the city other than city staff.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. We'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this item? All right, we'll close the public hearing, and Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Kristi, in terms of, I understand the city attorney is stating about if this moves forward, what the next steps will be in terms of quasi-judicial and things like that, but is there a specific timeline that staff would be looking at in terms of council determining what we'd like to do with the property or how we'd like to designate it?
Well, what the proposal had been was to have the medium density residential, so actually, it's here on this slide, the MD Res, to be consistent with the rest of the coastal crossing property and to have the R2 zoning. We have not had a conversation about the P1 zoning, which is institutional, and that's certainly something that any point in time city staff can bring forward. So I believe, you know, in order to sort of keep the train moving, we had... I don't think we've advertised for that next set, but August 13th is when we have the Planning and Zoning Board, and the way we were going to advertise for that particular public hearing was to have this MD Res and to have the R2 zoning. So if there's something you all want other than that, this would probably be a good time to talk about that because otherwise this week we'll probably do the advertisement for exactly those two, the zoning and future land use designations.
So if council has a desire to make it institutional, we would then need to change it from MD Res at this point to institutional?
In order to do the advertising, yes, then there would... Should probably be some discussion, you know, with the applicant because they were the one who submitted the application, so we need to all be on the same page.
Is that an invitation for them to come up?
That sure is.
Wouldn't that happen after?
Well, that was my question for staff.
Bring it to the city? The city? According to the development plan?
Yeah, according to the developers' agreement, we are being allowed to use it towards tree mitigation. So just to make it clean, putting my former city manager hat on for you, I mean, you guys do whatever you want because I don't care as long as we know we're giving it to you. We just want to use it for tree mitigation, and to do that and make it pretty clean, I would allow us to just continue the way we're going. We dedicate it to you once we get our land development permit, and then you all come back and rezone it the way you want.
We could change it from there. Okay.
Yeah.
And I think that's the best way to do it.
I think the strategy would be when we are ready to do something with it, and if we needed to change the zoning, that would be a good way to advertise to the neighbors what we plan to do with it at that time, whether it's going to stay conservation for the next 20 years or signage or something else. We mentioned, just a point of clarification, in Kristi's presentation, we mentioned a dog park. This would be a very bad place for a dog park. It has...
No access.
It has no access other than through the Tillman, and so just to be clear, if the neighbors are watching this, or we have no intention of a dog park there. There has been some talk of possibly an entrance sign to West Melbourne because of its location to the freeway. Again, a lot... Some logistics to work out there, power, visibility, height, all those things would have to be contemplated, and that would probably be the best time to come forward with any kind of rezoning change because that would then notify the neighbors of what we're doing there.
Understood. I had just stated at the last meeting, I'd prefer, just as one person on the council, to keep it as a conservation space but open to the thoughts of the rest of council when we get to that point. I just wanted to make sure that when we're bringing it into the city, we had the designation that was going to make it best for city staff and obviously with input from the developer. With that in mind, I'd like to make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 2025-18 to annex the stated property.
All right, thank you. Mr. Frampton?
A second, then.
All right, thank you. We have a motion on the floor from Ms. Adams and a second from Mr. Frampton. All those in favor of annexing this property, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion carries 6-0. Thank you. This is your item 2, 5B, amend the future land use, second reading.
So what I'd like to do is like we do on other items, that we'd like to do our presentation for Agenda Items 5B, 5C, and D together, since a great deal of the discussion last time was on the development agreement, but that way we cover it again for the public to hear if they so want to hear it, and we talk about the other property, you know, that's part of this overall coastal crossings, and you see that the applicants here in case you have any specific questions for them. So I believe the city attorney went over this slide unless he wants to say anything else.
Yeah, the only other thing I would say is just what I'd said earlier applies to this as well, and if you have any disclosures to make, you should do so at this time. Thank you.
Okay. So the background for the 16.21 acres of this property is that it's located just south of what's called Coastal Commerce Center. A lot of people know it by the Goodwill, the Audi, the Chuck E. Cheese, and what they're proposing to do with a vacant property is to have 150-unit, what we call fee simple, meaning people own their own little bit of land, two-story townhouse subdivision. So it wouldn't be apartments. Subdivision is actually, you know, subdividing the land, and the future land use request, that's what FLOU stands for, would be to go from commercial, which is its current designation, to West Melbourne Medium Density Residential, and then the zoning likewise would go from commercial parking zoning, parkway zoning, to the 1-2 and multifamily dwelling unit, and it would be accompanied with a development agreement. Technically, the math for the R2 zoning would allow them to have 162 units, but that's why we have a development agreement to limit them to 150. So the property history is that it was annexed in 2007. It was part of a larger, you know, annexation, which included Coastal Commerce, and then, you know, sort of jumping forward to 2025, there's been a lot of inquiries about this property over the years, you know, since 2007. The total acreage in the development agreement, because I know there were some questions about acreages, is 16.73, and that includes the main body, as is shown in yellow, plus a little red triangle. So that's how you get the 16.73 acres. The first item is 5B, the request for that future land use designation, and here it is with map showing you that it would go from the red color that on the right-hand side would turn to that brownish-orange-ish sort of color of the medium density residential. We always do our analysis based on compatibilities around the uses. We did feel that it was appropriate to have that designation in that particular area. The state of Florida has us look at it from the Florida statute perspective, and we analyze and coordinate with the different agencies. The school board, for example, they do a school concurrency letter where they talk about what schools, you know, the students would go to. We also look at the maximum impacts from the change, and it would actually decrease. So whenever you have commercial land uses, you have more impacts from that than you do residential, especially dropping from, you know, perhaps having as much as 352,000 square feet to 162. That's a big decrease. We do regardless of which development, you know, went forward, whether it was under commercial or this medium density residential, there's enough water and sewer capacity, public safety is addressed, and we talked a little bit about the school. It's consistent with some of our policies, so in the comprehensive plan, we have adopted goals, objectives, policies. I'm not going to read through it, but it is consistent with that, and the development agreement also has to be consistent with that, so that's why we included that statement in the bottom. This is a reminder for a lot of the public that all cities are under the obligation to follow their private property rights element that's in the comprehensive plan, and we have to do this analysis, sort of make this announcement that basically says, you know, whatever a property owner has the property zoned for, they have the ability to use. So if it's a vacant property and it's owned by a private property owner, then they have the ability to develop it under that zoning designation. So moving on to Agenda Item 5C, the rezoning request, this is where we have different labels for the zoning. So on the left-hand side, it's called commercial parkway with an interchange commercial overlay. What they're asking for is the R2 zoning, and the R2, the title of it is 1-2 and multifamily dwelling zoning. Our analysis is very similar for the rezoning with the compatibility, and then sort of jumping forward to 5D, the development agreement. What we ended up doing is determining, you know, between the applicant and staff, that the reasons for the agreement would be to limit the proposed uses and density. We'll know that it's townhouse lots, that it's not apartments. We'll know what the density is. The infrastructure improvements, there was some discussion of that, including that relocation of the canal as shown in the blue and the green, and the applicant again could tell you a little bit more about that. We wanted to make sure there was some language in there about architecture, landscaping, and site features. So when we had the city council meeting and when you all reviewed the development agreement last time, there were some items that you wanted to have addressed. There were eight items that are listed in the staff report, but I put them on this slide, and I believe the applicant will talk to you about it also. We addressed everything from the internal walking trails, the sidewalk connectivity to coastal lane, land dedication to the city, the voluntary public benefit contribution, internal street lighting, evaluation of a T-turnaround, ride share as an option, and the rental restriction provision. So I believe we covered everything, and like I said, we tried to establish that in the staff report. Here's another image of the... What they would like to have as a development, you know, kind of with that aerial showing you the FDOT pond. So that's that big water body that you see. That's just an FDOT pond. That serves I-95. Here's another image that we called out, some of the items that were identified on that concept plan, and again, the concept plan, if it's... The development agreement is approved tonight, that goes with the development agreement, and if they're going to have a change to the concept plan that significantly alters sort of this, unless, let's say, for example, Melbourne Tillman Water Control District has something different in mind than what's shown here. If an outside agency, you know, sort of dictates a change, then no, it doesn't automatically come back to you. But if the developer does, then yes, that comes back through Planning and Zoning Board and City Council. So I'm not going to read all the labels. I think we went through quite a bit of this last time, but this is what, you know, the applicant had proposed, and as you all saw, they're proposing for it to be a gated community. They still have to go through that process of bringing it to city council with their gated community requests and still meeting the stacking requirements and the click-to-enter and all the other features they have to do. So that will be at another meeting. That will be, you know, in the future, and the applicant can tell you what they're envisioning for submittal of the plans. Part of the development agreement also talks about some slight changes that they wanted between what we had in the code requirement and what they would like to do. We have this table. We also had included in the staff report, they're not very significant changes, and I believe that we do get, you know, some sort of an enhanced layout because of allowing them to do this, but we could certainly talk about it some more if you want. These were items that I had talked about before. The second bullet is a reminder that, you know, they're going to coordinate with Space Coast Area Transit and the Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization, and we did put in a statement about, you know, coordinating if they couldn't get the micro transit service and potentially having ride share or other programs, and that's to address commuting and some of the other needs that those residents might have. I'm not going to read through the others, but again, I just wanted to remind you that we had discussed some of this at the last meeting. If you would like the applicant to talk about their models, remember they had shown us the difference between the front-loaded, meaning garages in the front, or rear-loaded, which means garages in the back. So in conclusion, for the small-scale amendment and rezoning, if we could have council make separate motions for Agenda Item 5B, and that's for ordinance 2025-19, and then Agenda Item 5C, which is ordinance 2025-20, and then you all would make a separate vote on the development agreement. So if I could ask the city attorney if he could help us by reading the titles of those ordinances?
Do you have a question first?
Yeah, I just had a question. Those rear ones, how far away from I-95 are they? Do you know?
I'll get the applicant to answer that.
Okay.
Want to continue with the reading and get Courtney to answer?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have two ordinances to read. I'll read them back to back. One is ordinance number 2025-19, in accordance of the City of West Melbourne, Pervara County, Florida, amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan to change the future land use of parcels of land totaling 16.21 plus or minus acres, located approximately 1,250 feet south of the intersection of US 192, New Haven Avenue, and Coastal Lane as more fully described herein from City of West Melbourne Commercial to City of West Melbourne Medium Density Residential, providing an effective date. And then ordinance 2025-20, in accordance of the City of West Melbourne, Pervara County, Florida, rezoning a 16.21 plus or minus acre parcel land generally located approximately 1,250 feet south of the intersection of US 192, West New Haven Avenue, and Coastal Lane as more fully described herein from City of West Melbourne Commercial Parkway with interchange commercial overlay zone to R2, 1-2, and multifamily dwelling district zoning, providing an effective date. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Barker?
So there's rear-loaded townhomes in... Within the whole development, but I would say the closest rear-loaded townhome to I-95 is approximately 200 feet away.
Okay, so the traffic on I-95, would they hear a lot of that? Or is there going to be?
We restructured the wet pond to be in between there, and then we agreed to the heavier landscaping along the perimeter.
Okay.
To basically be opaque within a year of the CO, so.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Yes, they're going to hear it, yes.
All right, so this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this item? All right, thank you. With the wishes of the council? Council have any questions? Mr. Frampton?
Got a couple of questions on the development agreement.
All right, now, we're going to do 5B and 5C, and then we're going to do the development agreement separately?
If you'd like to discuss them.
All right, then go ahead, Mr.
Well, I want the... A, I want those to be contingent on the development agreement itself. You can't come to terms on the development agreement.
All right, let's talk about...
I wouldn't want to make a motion on the other two.
Okay, carry on.
You talk about the building, it's being one-story, two-story, and then you, on page 5D, number four, you say it's going to be 25 feet tall. Is that... Is that stated in the actual?
I believe it is. The height...
The height.
It's on page 5D-13, and it's... When you look at the bottom of the page, there's a number one that says site-related off-site improvements. It's the sentence right before that that said, "Building heights shall be limited to 25 feet for all townhomes."
Thank you. You talk about extra parking spaces between A and D.
Right.
On this map you got in front of us, where is that and how many spaces?
Courtney, I'm going to need your help in remembering what's what here.
Can you point... Can you use the pointer and...
Let me use the cursor. So what we're talking about is in this little curve here, having...
The inside of the curve or the inside of the curve?
It would be perpendicular to the curve, so it'd be pulling spaces, maybe seven or eight spaces that they could probably build in that area.
And we... Can we state a number?
No.
Because two is a lot different than seven or eight, so.
Well, I know, but it...
If we leave it up to the developer...
The only way we could state would be to hold off for five minutes, take a recess, have them figure it out, because now it's not to that point where we have that type of dimension yet, and they still have to go through St. John's and some of the other approvals to figure out what they have. So it'd be better if we just said, you know, we would like to see, you know, as much as five spaces or something, but not tell them. They have to have 10 spaces, not knowing what the other agencies are going to say.
So is this going to come back? Is this going to come back to us for...
Well, this is what's called the concept plan.
Right.
So the final 100% civil engineer drawings have not been prepared yet. Civil engineer drawings that are 100% are reviewed by staff. So let's have Courtney answer about, you know, what she thinks the quantity of spaces are.
So we were also, if we could vacate the Melbourne Tillman right-of-way, where
Yes, they're going to hear it, yes.
All right, so this is, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this item? All right, thank you. What are the wishes of the council? Council have any questions? Mr. Frampton?
Got a couple of questions on the development agreement.
Right now, we're going to do 5B and 5C, and then we're going to do the development agreement separately?
If you'd like to discuss them.
All right, then go ahead, Mr.
Well, I want the, A, I want, I want those to be contingent on the development agreement itself. Can't come to terms on the development agreement.
All right, let's talk about.
I wouldn't want to make a motion on the other two.
Okay, carry on.
You talk about the building, it's being one-story, two-story, and then you, on page 5D, number four, you say it's going to be 25 feet tall. Is that? Is that stated in the actual?
I believe it is.
The height.
It's on page 5D-13, and it's, when you look at the bottom of the page, there's a number one that says site-related off-site improvements. It's the sentence right before that that said, "Building heights shall be limited to 25 feet for all townhomes."
Thank you. You talk about extra parking spaces between A and D.
Right.
On this map you got in front of us, where is that and how many spaces?
Courtney, I'm going to need your help in remembering what's what here.
Can you point, can you use the pointer and?
Let me use the cursor. So what we're talking about is in this little curve here, having.
The inside of the curve or the inside of the curve?
It, it would be perpendicular to the curve, so it'd be pulling spaces, maybe seven or eight spaces that they could probably build in that area.
And we, can we state a number?
No.
Because two is a lot different than seven or eight, so.
Well, I know, but.
If we leave it up to the developer.
The only way we could state would be to hold off for five minutes, take a recess, have them figure it out, because now, it's not to that point where we have that type of dimension yet, and they still have to go through St. John's and some of the other approvals to figure out what they have. So it'd be better if we just said, you know, we would like to see, you know, as much as five spaces or something, but not tell them. They have to have 10 spaces, not knowing what the other agencies are going to say.
So is this going to come back, is this going to come back to us for?
Well, this is what's called the concept plan.
Right.
So the final 100% civil engineer drawings have not been prepared yet. Civil engineer drawings that are 100% are reviewed by staff. So let's, let's have Courtney answer about, you know, what she thinks the quantity of spaces are.
So we, we were also, if we could vacate the Melbourne Tillman right-of-way, where that, where that, right there, we were also going to put parking spaces there. So we have an interest in putting as many guest parking spaces as we can possibly fit in there. We could commit to five additional guest parking spaces right now, because I know I can fit those in there, but until I get an engineer to lay it out, it's very difficult to do that on the, on the fly.
Well, I thank you for committing to at least five, so maybe we can put a minimum of five in the agreement, so we have something to hold our feet to the fire.
Okay, we'll put it in.
Would it be possible, if that's the only change, to do a vote with that change, rather than having to come back for another hearing?
Yes. 5D, page, 5D-6, you talk about the entranceway being brick pavers. Give me one second. On 5D-19, it states that where we got painted and stamped is crossed through. It says paved, not pavers, so paved could mean blacktop. So do we want to say pavers there?
Yes, we can do that. That's almost like a typo, so I appreciate you bringing that to my attention.
Wait, let's, let's back up. What, what line is that just?
So that's 14A.
14.
In the development agreement, and that's page 5D-19. It's the first word under A. He would like to change the word paved to paver.
Paved could mean blacktop, and we didn't want that, so I wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Yeah, because right below it, it says paver, so yeah, that was.
That's for driveways of the individual homes, not the entranceway. So on 5D-9, we talk about internal street lighting, says, "Street lighting installation along with internal roadways consistent with city standards." I didn't think the city set standards on communities with street lighting.
We don't, but what that refers to is city codes about lighting, and that really has more to do with height, the amount of illumination, does it travel off-site? So there, there's a whole section of the code that deals with sight lighting, but that's really more about the poles, their height, how much light spread there is, but not really about the design of it. So that's what that means, but if you need us to clarify that, that, that's what we're referring to.
I just wanted to make sure that, I know we didn't set standards for having them, so I didn't want that to be a problem down the road. I wanted to make sure it was clear that we wanted it in the language that there is street lighting in the community.
Okay.
However you want to word that. If you think this wording is sufficient.
I think the wording is sufficient, but.
Yeah, I, I think the wording is good. Our, our fear with street lighting is always the bleed over, right? We're.
My fear was that we don't have, we don't have standards for that, so I'm.
Well, we, we do in our design standards for our developments.
I was talking about as far as having them. I didn't want it to be an arguing.
No, we, and, and I, I think the development team has been very receptive to the lighting concept, so.
As far as 5D-15, under C, vehicle use areas, you added number five. It says, "Prior to final site approval, evaluation, evaluate the need for the T-turns." Who's evaluation, and does the city have any input on that after the fact?
We, we do. So again, the final site plan gets reviewed not only by city staff, but also other agencies such as Brevard County's Fire Department, and that's, you're right, we didn't say that in that sentence.
They don't require a T-turn, so I mean, that's something we added in.
It is something we added in, and it's also something that, remember the applicant talked about, you know, they, they are not at the 100% drawing yet.
I realize that.
I need to.
If it was left up to the, the developer, I mean, the added cost probably isn't going to be, you know, good for them, so I, I just, I wanted to know who had final approval on this, and if it came back to the city, could we say we, we want it? Because it did, it does say, prior to final site plan, evaluate the need for the U-turn around the similar devices of this other most driveway stubout. This can be a stabilization. It just seems like it's not.
Fair enough.
Doesn't have any teeth. As long as we evaluate it, fine, we meet the standard.
Yeah, it's, like I said, if you wanted to insert, you know, staff, the Fire Department and the applicant, well, the applicant submits it, and it's staff and the Fire Department who evaluates it. If you wanted to insert, you know, the city manager shall have part of that.
I'm okay with staff being evaluated. I just didn't want it to be contingent just on the developer having to, you know, at least evaluate it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So. Our city engineer will be evaluating it as well.
Okay. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Ms. Maguire. No questions? Okay, all right. Ms. Maguire, what would you, what are the wishes of Ms. Maguire?
What were the?
5B, 2025-19?
Yeah, but I know there were.
The, the language for the pavers and the five additional parking spaces, I think, is what you want to include in the motion, if that's what you're preparing to do.
Yes, that's what I was referring to.
And to be the third motion. And to be contingent of the development agreement. It's, it's, it's getting to be a longer.
It's getting to be a lot longer.
It's getting to be longer.
More proven in development.
But I think that's important. I mean, it's contingent on the development.
Um, okay, perfect. All right, then with that, I will, we're on.
We have to do three separate motions and votes, and they have to be in sequence.
Then I will make a motion that we approve the second reading of Ordinance Number 2025-19 with the changes of fixing the typo, I believe that was in 14A, and then.
So those motions will be with the development agreement.
Perfect, just making sure. All right, then I will go back and just say I'll approve the second reading of Ordinance Number 2025-19 as written.
All right, thank you. We have a motion on the floor from Ms. Maguire and Mr. Frampton.
A second.
And we have a second from Mr. Frampton. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion carries 6-0. All right, thank you. All right, we're on for Item 5C, which is 2025-20. Mr. Gaylord.
I'll make a motion. We approve the second reading of Ordinance 2025-20.
All right, thank you, Ms. Volz.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Gaylord and a second by Ms. Volz. All those in favor of pacifying, passing 2025-20? Pacifying. Please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries 6-0. All right, thank you. 5D, the development agreement.
There were, don't have to list all those things all over again? Okay, well, I don't remember. I didn't write them all down, so I'm just going to say whatever they were.
Want me to?
Yes, yes. I'm going to make a motion that we approve the development agreement with, go ahead. Yes, yes, go ahead.
I'm making a motion. We approve the development agreement with the three changes of being contingent upon the approval of the development agreement, the other two, the pavers, the language in the, the typo being in five, what was the number, Kristy?
Yeah, I've, I've got it.
And the, what was the last?
Five parking spaces.
Parking spaces, minimum of five parking spaces.
Yeah, I didn't feel so bad then.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor from Mr. Frampton. A second. Mr. Gaylord?
Somebody else.
And we have a second from Mr. Gaylord. All those in favor of passing the development agreement, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion carries 6-0. All right, thank you. That was easy. Let's move on to the next item here. E, rezoning of two city-owned parcels.
All right, this is a continuation. I, I don't have a slide presentation for this, but this is a continuation of the agenda item we had that had to do with the property at 3010 Dairy Road, and it's only 1.51 acres. The city owns it, and so again, this is, you know, bringing it into the city, which we've already done, and then changing the future land use from a county future land use and a county zoning to a city one. So all that's left in that process is this rezoning, and that would be to have you all approve the second reading of Ordinance Number 2025-17, which would adopt the city-initiated zoning of the P1 from the county's suburban residential and rural residential zoning. We've already, you all in a previous meeting already approved the small-scale comprehensive plan amendment. So if we could have the city attorney read the title of Ordinance Number 2025-17.
And in the unlikely event that somebody has talked to you about this application since the last time we had the reading, you would need to disclose that as well. This is Ordinance Number 2025-17, in ordinance of the City of West Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, rezoning 1.51 acres of property located at 3010 Dairy Road, and as more fully described herein from Brevard County Suburban Residential and Rural Residential 1 to City of West Melbourne P1 and Institutional, providing an effective date. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this item? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Wishes, Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. I know it's a second reading, but in terms of underneath property history for 5E2, it had stated the land may be used for municipal purposes in the future. Based on the location and the, I would say, interesting shape, because it's so narrow and next to that canal, what do we envision municipal purposes being in the future for that property?
So originally, that site was for stormwater, so it's, stormwater is always a possibility. We're always looking, always looking for places for stormwater. It is near the plant, and so the possibility of running utility lines. We have considered the site for a deep well injection as we're looking at locations for our new deep well, but now we have some other, some other leads that might be leading that way. So basically, just anything that the city might need that, that space for, that, again, as long as it works in harmony with, you know, we're, we're not looking to put, we don't have a trash dump or, or anything like that. We're not looking to do anything like that, but anything to do with our, our three utilities, you know, either stormwater, water sewer, or reuse might, might be feasible on that site.
Understood. That would be a terrible location for, for a trash relocation center.
We leave that to the county. We leave that to the county.
I think that's a good idea. I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of Ordinance 2025-17 as written.
All right, thank you. Ms. Maguire.
A second.
All right, thank you. My lights all went off. No one has a question? All right, we have a motion on the floor from Ms. Adams. We have a second from Ms. Maguire. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes 6-0. All right, thank you. Next is the public forum. I have two speaker cards. First one is Joan Connolly, followed by Jean, or Jeannie Wilmer.
Okay, we're friendly.
Ms. Connolly, please state your name and address for the record, please, and speak into the microphone. You may need to pull that way down.
Joan Connolly, 551 Jennifer Circle in Melbourne, 32904. I want to speak about the entrance of Hollywood Estates. I have a package, I have petitions, and I just want to read a statement, if that's okay.
Please, you have three minutes.
Okay. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of the majority of residents in Hollywood Estate. My name is Joan Connolly. I'm a resident of this community. The issue I would like to present concerns the front entrance of Hollywood Estates, which is city-owned property. I have initiated a petition to request that the City of West Melbourne resume responsibility of our entrance. First and foremost, we are a 55-plus community. Second, the individuals who took on the responsibility to maintain and naturalize the front entrance had no authority to initiate a transaction that affected the entire community. Hollywood Estates has a voluntary HOA. It provides a social outlook for the community members who wish to participate, and they are responsible for the census that enables us to keep our 55 status. It is my assumption that when arrangements were made in April of 2025, the HOA had less than 70 members. There are 412 homes in our community. We have our share of snowbirds, homes for sale, and residents that are in facilities with health issues. On July 10th, Mary Snow, a resident of Hollywood Estates, posted on the Nextdoor platform her thoughts on the condition of the entrance. The response was overwhelming in favor of change. The petition came to fruition on July 16th, and the response, and, I'm sorry, and was completed on July 28th. Within this package, there are petitions signed by 245 households in favor of the City of West Melbourne to resume the maintenance of the front entrance. The package I have prepared will give you a timeline of events. As you will note, the City of West Melbourne agreed to resume maintenance of our entryway in March of 2025. A group of individuals backed by the voluntary HOA told the city that they would take on the responsibility with absolutely no input from our community. The documents provided are texts, emails, and letters that will give you a better understanding of the individuals who made the decision to dismiss city involvement. Please be advised that the language in some of the correspondence by the president of the HOA at that time might be offensive. In closing, we as the community would like to return to the original status of the City of West Melbourne to maintain our entryway. We have worked diligently to ascertain the preferences of the Hollywood Estates community concerning the front entrance. It is the hope of the 45 households that have signed this petition that will be packed, we will be placed back on the city rotation for maintenance of our entryway on Henry Avenue at Eurolius Convenience. I guess I would need to know what to do moving forward, if there's something I can do.
How many residents did you say signed?
245.
245.
Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for doing the work to collect your petitions. I'm sure especially in the heat.
It was challenging, but I, I've had someone help me, and she did probably 75% of them. She did the work, she did the work.
The heat of summer, that is not an easy thing to do, so I appreciate that, and I appreciate you coming. From our, in terms of our city attorney, if, if you can weigh in, what are our options in terms of Hollywood Estates?
I mean, generally, the, the city doesn't maintain privately-owned properties.
But there seems to be a disagreement on whether that property is ours based on what she's saying, so I just wanted.
I haven't had opportunity to look into this, because it's never been proposed to me, so I'd have to look at the documents, and I don't know that I could advise you further than that, so if the, if the city administration, I could work with them to see what the status of the ownership is.
Okay, Mr. Roddy, can we look into that and determine?
Be happy to look into that. If you would like to leave the petitions with the city clerk, that would help. I don't know if you have copies of them, or?
Hackets, and I, these are the originals.
Okay, yeah, I would keep the originals. If you have copies, I think if you could give them to the city clerk, that would be great. Oh, no prob, we're not going anywhere. We'll, we'll be at City Hall Monday through Friday, so.
So what I need to do is get you digital copies of the petitions that were signed?
Or give her the originals.
Yeah, digital or copies, you know, what? We always prefer you hang on to the originals, so we're, we're happy to take copies or digitally, however you have them. We'd be happy to take them and take a look at that.
Mr. Gaylord, did you have a question?
Yeah, Ms. Connolly, thanks for.
Yeah, Ms. Connolly, thanks for coming to council and bringing this to our attention. I apologize if this question's redundant with what's in your package, but we'd like to know a little bit more about the context of why individuals from your HOA discussed with the city about taking responsibility for that. Is that, is that?
It was a naturalization project, I guess. I don't know. I mean, I've been in the community, I don't know, five years, six years I've had property, maybe seven. So originally, I guess, when they moved the entrance from Hollywood to Henry, oh, I'm sorry, Hollywood to Henry, the city owned the property. I believe in 2010, the Veterans Club wanted to put in like a brick garden, and they received permission, they have it in writing, we do have the documents in writing apparently, that it's like a leeway that the city would still maintain the property, but the Veterans Club is responsible for maintaining the brick garden. Other than that, the HOA, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I'm not part of the HOA.
It's okay. I just didn't know if it was. No, it's fine. I just didn't know if you, you knew. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Frampton?
Just so y'all know that it's kind of common for HOAs to come to the city. I know Sawgrass has an agreement with the city that we maintain some of the city property. Sometimes it gets cut on a more regular basis by landscapers so that everything looks the same. I mean, it could have been the case. We do own the property. I just looked it up on property assessors. So I'm sure the city manager worked with you and, you know, worked with the veterans who took it over as well, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul, did you want to come forward and speak on this?
Excuse me, I got bronchitis if I start coughing. Excuse myself. My name is Paul Lillybridge. I live at 542 Marnie Circle. And a while back, we, we all agreed as a community, take over the center median, and we were maintaining that, we were putting plants in it, and that's all we were going to be responsible for. A resident came up and made a donation, and he wanted two palm trees put in a retention pond. The person who was giving the money didn't follow that intention. She put in all these little sticks and twigs that if you've gone by and seen, look very horrible. So he's running out of happy camper right now. I've done many, much work on the front entrance. I've weeded, I've cut the grass, I've done a lot on it. But for them to then come in and change the whole dynamics to, and it's good for the environment, but the entrance of Hollywood Estates is not the botanical garden. We shouldn't be putting stuff in there like native plants and all, when if somebody wants to do that, they can do that in their own front yard. But nobody does that in their front yard. They want it all done in the front entrance. This is, I had approached and sent emails to the city manager. I talked to supervisors of the different departments, and that's where an agreement had been reached of who was going to be in charge of it. And that's when the person who was, how do I say this, going against what we wanted to do was to take those individuals' twigs and stuff out and turn it back over to the city and mow, because you already mow along the fence line of our community. So as you came along the grass line, you'll come down, cut that, come across, come down, cut that, and then you would be done. It's just that nothing was communicated to the community. None of the residents knew what was going on, and we even get comments from people who come to our bingo and our bunko that they're surprised how horrible it looks. They would, if you look across the street to Timber Ridge, you can see how nice it looks over there, and that's something we want to aim to. But the retention pond and the other side by the flagpole and all, which is city property, is what we're maintaining, what we want done. We like to have all that stuff removed and either cement it over or something else, but again, and tell you the truth, we would do that ourselves. We would take the responsibility on, the city gave us permission. But we just, if you, if you haven't come by and seen it, I'm sorry. I mean, that's just, it looks like a bunch of weeds, which is a bunch of weeds. It's something that, like she said, Mary Snow put online and exploded. It's just something that's been building deep in us, and now it's come out. We got the petitions, we showing that people want to come together, and we just want to get our front entrance to look like, so we proud when people come to visit us. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you, Paul.
All right, thank you.
Next speaker is? Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Frampton, I didn't see that.
I just want to say one thing, you guys, be careful what you ask for, because once we take it over, it's going to be to the city's standards, and it's, you're not going to have a whole lot of say at that point. And, and, you know, if you took your 245 petitions and went out there and got it nice to the way you wanted it, maybe that's a thought too. But once we take it over, you know, it's going to be, we're going to go in there and cut it, and that's probably what we're going to do.
And just real quick, you might have known, not known that one of the residents put in our newsletter stating that anybody ever touched it, they would be arrested for damaging property.
But that's an HOA issue that you.
Okay, but I'm saying we're also a voluntary HOA. Our HOA don't speak for our community, they only speak for their membership.
Thank you. Next speaker, Jeannie Wilmer. State your name and address, please, for the record.
Jane Wilmer, 502 Lee Court, Hollywood Estates.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. You used to sweep our streets, and I remember that we don't have curbs, and the street sweeper couldn't do it. Right now, we have so much sand in our streets, especially the streets, they go downhill, and it's a horseshoe. It's dangerous riding our bikes. My husband and I, we ride our bikes a lot, and if you have to make a quick turn, it's, can they come through and just go down the center of the street and get rid of some of the sand?
Thank you, Ms. Wilmer. We've had that conversation up here several times.
You know, I don't expect any.
I think our city manager has a comment on this.
So the good news is, in the city budget, which starts October 1st of 2025, we did budget to buy a street sweeper that can go in all the neighborhoods. And so the current contract that we have does not have the, you know, it doesn't specify the type, and so it doesn't pick up when there's not any kind of curb or gutter. So that's good news. The, the other good news is we are looking at doing some stormwater improvements in Hollywood Estates, because Hollywood Estates is flat and doesn't have the stormwater infrastructure that it should have had. And so we have that project as well that will also help with that element. So there's a couple of things coming your way, a much easier topic than the, than the entryway.
Okay, well, thank you. I didn't know we were in line for.
It's almost like I paid you to come and ask that question.
Thank you.
And we'll see you guys tomorrow night.
Thank you. Thank you, all right. Anyone else wish to speak during public forum before we close the public forum? I don't have anyone else. All right, we'll close the public forum, we'll go to the consent agenda. Item B from the consent agenda has been pulled, so we are just looking at item A. And Mr. Frampton?
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as written.
Thank you. Ms. Adams?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion on the floor from Mr. Frampton and a second from Ms. Adams. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed. Motion carries six zero. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item, which is action agenda non-consent awarding the new contract. Mr. Petroni?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Mark Petroni, your capital projects manager. As the subject says, we're here to discuss and hopefully award a new contract for our subject of the shore project for all the residents that live on Lake Ashley, Circle, Dundee, Manor Place, and the 15 residents on the south side of Sheridan Road. Back in February 2024, I was in front of you, we awarded a contract to Young's Communication an amount of $7,810,400, added our 5% contingency to it for a total of $8,205,000. Approximately seven months later, I guess there was a merger, Young's Communication became True Line Infrastructure Services in September of 2024. So I'm just going to refer to them as True Line at this point. Approximately six months later, as the project was going on in March of 2025, we received a letter stating that True Line was going to cease and abandon the project. We contacted the surety, they took over, which is Atlantic Specialty Insurance Company, another, the company that had the performance bond. Sure, ASIC is the name of the company. They end up contacting Beacon Financial Group, who then put a package together, put the project out to bid, which includes correcting some items that we determined True Line erred on prior to. They received a couple bids and selected CK Construction and Development Group, and they have entered into a completion contract to finish the project. CK Construction is a reputable construction company, they've done some local work here, and they also have bid on the project originally, as well as other projects we put out to bid. This will be the first time they possibly get awarded. We've talked to them shortly. We haven't really got really too far into them, but they have expressed their capability, willingness, and expertise to perform on this project, and they've agreed to all the previous terms that we had in the contract with True Line prior. As you'll see, there's a little bit of a difference between their bid and the original contract amount. However, the surety is going to pick up the difference. And based, and there's, basically, once we get through this award, it basically triggers a tender agreement that will be stating that the surety will pay us a check for the difference of the two contracts. We also are requiring, and the contractors agreed, they'll be providing a new performance bond and a maintenance bond to ensure that the completion of the project gets done. Hopefully, we don't have to do this again with it. Tonight's actions is to enter into contract or award the contract to CK Construction Development, which again, like I said, will then trigger the tender agreement with the surety. And I can tell you, it's taken approximately four or five months, culmination of a lot of work, a lot of diligence work with the surety, they've been great to work with. The other city staff I work with has been involved. We've worked with the engineer record, and CK has been really good to work with as far as that, so we can hopefully get this project moving forward, which will make a lot of people happy. As far as the fiscal impact, this project still remains as a 100% grant-funded project. The original contract with True Line was for $7,810,400, which had, of which we paid $749,879.10, which left a balance of $7,60828 at the time they abandoned the project. The new contract with CK that the surety has negotiated is for $8,889,277. The surety is going to be issuing a check once the, the tender agreement is signed, which will make up the difference. So based on all that, there really isn't an impact fiscally to, to the city. We're just basically starting over with a new contractor to get this thing done. With all that said, as your capital projects manager, I'm here to recommend that you approve and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with CK Construction and Development LLC in amount of $8,889,277. To that, we will add our 5% contingency of amount of $440,463.85, for a total not to exceed of $9,333,740.80. And at the same time, by doing that, it will allow us to enter into the tender agreement with the surety to pick up the check difference.
All right.
I'll answer any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Sir? I'm doing well. I do find it amusing that I have multiple questions on something that we have about one page in our council report on this, on this item coming forward, but it's all good. First of all, I did note, as you had mentioned, I appreciate this project continues to remain 100% grant-funded. But in terms of the company, have they done any other work in, similar to this in Brevard?
Yes, my understanding, they did Indian River Isles up in just north, I guess it's South Rockledge, north of Suntree Boulevard. I've talked to some people that live in there and the other, the other engineering service, and they went through that fairly well. That's the only one that I'm familiar with, it's subject of shore. I know they've done other projects, but I didn't get into the weeds yet.
But they gave you positive feedback on that process and the quality of work?
Correct.
Okay.
Also, we've required bonding and certificates of insurance that they've already provided prior to any contract sign, and their, I guess their minimums are far greater than what the city actually requires from the insurance coverages. Their ratings are A-plus double on some of the bonding stuff, and the companies that they have are a little bit stronger, I think, than the surety that we have that we're dealing with right now, which has been great to work with. So, so far, I've not got anything that gets my senses tingling yet.
Great, that answers my second and third question, with the last question being, and I promise you, it's not a joke, even though we continue to have this conversation when you present projects, the, the about million-dollar difference in the quote being as we didn't have additional information of them coming forward, is there an explanation from their side as to why the difference?
There's some errors that's not huge that we found out that need to be, you know, taken care of, which is probably why True Line's out of business.
So there were errors with the True Line quote, not the one that's coming forward?
Yeah, we, we take what they do, they're supposed to know how, I think I've told you this before, the contractors are supposed to know how to do their bidding. I don't go out and help them. I know there's, probably brought some extra costs to this one, was some errors that we determined after they abandoned the property that they weren't paid for, which has to be rectified that they're doing. The other thing is, I think because they're out of business, they're out of business for a reason, and maybe they didn't bid it properly. It's, it's hard to say. The quantities are the quantities. As a contractor, have the ability to stat a number and maybe get a little bit more than if it was, you know, put out 20 bids, I don't know.
Understood. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have True Line making errors in the neighborhood, that now we're paying this next company to go in and fix those errors and then complete the project. But it sounds like those are the things we've got to work on.
There are a couple errors that are going to be corrected, and then they're going to come back in, because no contractor is actually going to come in and take what was left and touch it and then give any warranties on top of that. So that's why it's got to be corrected.
Which makes sense. It just makes me nervous that there are enough errors for a million-dollar difference, but it could be the other factors, as you've mentioned, so.
There's some other factors in there. It's not, the errors weren't that much.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good to know.
And I think, and to your question, what they're doing the project for is very similar to what they originally bid to do the project, which does make us feel comfortable. So it's, it's not a case where they're overgouging or anything, they're, they were, they were just not the low bidder. And I think now, in hindsight, we understand why YCOM was the low bidder, or True Line was the low bidder, is because they were going out, and so they were bidding on projects and massively overextended themselves, so. So we, we feel comfortable with this number based on that. It's very similar to what they originally bid the project, CK did.
In your experience, at least from your perspective in your role, were there any red flags that we missed in terms of, yes, we tend to go with the lowest bidder because it saves the city money, but now hindsight is 2020? So as we go forward with other, other projects and contracts, is this just the luck of the draw?
Yeah.
Or things that we should have seen that we missed?
It's so hard, because they had done essentially our two largest infrastructure projects before this to a high level of satisfaction. So they, we, you know, we had a very good relationship with them. Now, what we didn't see coming was the, them being bought out by a larger company, and, you know, that you just can't foresee, right? They, that just happened, and we didn't really have a, obviously didn't have a say in that or have control of that. But leading into them falling apart, they were, you know, they were a very good contractor for us, doing very good work. And so that's kind of disheartening, as tough to be able to anticipate in the future when they're doing good work now, you know, what's going to happen in the future. Also, keep in mind that they got bonded for this project, and if the bonding company had any indication that they weren't going to be able to perform, they wouldn't have been able to get insurance, and that's all a bond is, is insurance. They wouldn't have been able to get insurance if, if they, if the company wasn't strong enough to, to be able to. to, to be able to support it. So sometimes these things happen, they're, they're very flukish. At one point in time, we had around the conference table, four or five different engineers, our team, a couple of different contractors talking about this, and in the room, there was only two other projects that anybody in the room had ever had this happen. So again, it's also not a thing where it's, there's a good playbook to run off of, because it just doesn't happen that often, so.
Understood. And then my last question is in terms of, I know that they had bid on this project previously, so they're aware of what we're asking for and all those, you know, specs and things like that. Are they committed to the same timeline in terms of the residents know what's coming forward? They're gonna be able to complete it in a reasonable timeframe?
Yes. Yeah, we took the work that was done, which is part of the water lines, that was all part of the project, new water services. We backed that out, came up with a reasonable timeframe, and I believe, I don't have it in front of me, but if my memory is pretty good, I think there's four hundred and eighty days for substantial completion. And I think we were at five eighty originally, so when I took out the initial work that was done correctly, minus the work that's not correctly. And I, I gotta get with them, everything I've talked to them about is, is making me feel pretty good response time. And I, the pre-construction meetings give me a little bit better idea, but nothing gave me a red flag with YCOM. And I think to follow up with Mr. Rhodey, said I think I started seeing things happen when they merged with the two other companies. Personnel changes started coming in, maybe too many cooks in the kitchen, and I don't, things just weren't being done the way I like getting things done. But I think we're good, if I can get more horsepower, we might be able to get this thing done even sooner, but that's gonna take some pre-construction meetings and some coordination to get sequencing done, so.
All right.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
That'll be glad. Mr. Francis? I'm sorry, Mr. Francis?
Thank you, Mayor. Sounds like we dodged a bullet. You know, they, they faltered, did some errors, and now we're gonna get a better bid contract and get the errors fixed. I hope that we don't keep them to an unreasonable timeline. Timeline's gonna be starting new from the date we sign the contract, I'm assuming, correct?
Well, I've gotta do an NTP, once I issue the notice to proceed, so the contract is the first major step. I do, I can tell you from talking with them, and I, the reason I will say it is that they are ready to probably mobilize in about three weeks if we can get all our i's dotted, t's crossed. I have to do another pre-con meeting with the county to introduce them with the right-of-way issues on Sheridan. I've gotta introduce into our team, set a, you know, expectations that I have, and then really get down into the weeds with them as far as their staffing. But I do agree, things happen for a reason, and this might have been a really good thing for us, the way things were going, it could have been much worse. And the surety, I can tell you, as Mr. Rhodey said, has been really good to work with, cause I might not be coming back in front of you if there was issues with them for another four or five months, so.
Hopefully, they're good to work with when it's time to write the check.
Well, it's, this, we're trying to keep every, yeah. Yeah, we're trying to make all three agreements kind of.
As far as the check goes, as soon as we sign the contract, you said the surety's gonna cover the additional cost, is that how that's gonna work?
The way we do this, once this gets approved, we're trying to make them all simultaneous execution, so.
So we're not fronting the money, the extra cost?
I don't believe we're gonna do anything until we get that check in our hand. I mean, I'm.
Okay, so that being said, with the contingency of four hundred thousand and change, if we don't use all that money, is that money we have to refund to a surety because it was a contingency?
No, the contingency of any contract that I bring in front of you, or just in case something unforeseen comes up, and we have money there that we can take without having to do major change or, or problems. If it's not used, the contractor doesn't get it, it's just not.
It's grant money, so what happens to the money after that?
It's just money we wouldn't request to get paid back, so. From the grant. Right now, we're still under the grant cap. We had to adjust the contingency because the contract cost is more.
The grant money is fronted by us.
Yeah, we, we front.
Get that back.
And then we get reimbursed within thirty days from the.
The surety, they're gonna write us a check, and that covers the low-hanging fruit, and then the grant covers the rest?
Yeah, and that gets the insurer, that gets the surety put to the sidelines, so that now it, it'll just be a relationship between us and CK Construction.
Thank you, I understand that a little better now. I'll make a motion that we approve and authorize the city manager to execute, execute, execute the agreement of CK Construction and Development LLC in the amount of eight million eight hundred thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars as written.
We have a motion on the floor, Mr. Gaylord?
That includes the contingency, so that would include the.
Contingency's on top of that.
What?
Make sure.
I'll second that motion.
All right, thank you, we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Francis, and a second by Mr. Gaylord. All those in favor, please.
So one, one quick item, part of the three contracts, one of the contracts we're not part of, that's between the surety and the new contractor. The other two, one of them will be a contract between us and CK Construction. And then the third agreement will be the tender agreement between us and the surety company. And so if we could add, if, if, if it's okay with the council, if you could amend your motion to authorize the city manager to also enter into the tender agreement with the surety company.
That's part of this recommendation, correct?
Sorry, then strike that, forget I said that.
Accepting the ten-year tender agreement from the surety to cover, is that?
That's exactly.
So we'll make the motion to.
You didn't hear that part, I apologize.
Mirror the recommendation in our.
Good idea.
Mr. Gaylord, you good with that as well, if you second?
I'll second the motion to mirror the recommendation.
All right, thank you. We still have a motion on the floor from Mr. Francis, and we have a second from Mr. Gaylord. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, say nay. Motion carries six zero. All right. Thank you very much. Next item is celebrated entry parks, Erin Murphy. Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor, Council. I am Erin Murphy, the Recreation Director. I am here to talk to you about celebrated entries. So as part of the Parks Master Plan, it was recommended that we improved our entryways to go into the parks, to kind of make people know that they were going into the, our parks for the city of West Melbourne. We put out an RFQ, we got one proposal back from GAI, and although GAI is very qualified and a great company, they had proposed, it was a little under seventy-five thousand dollars, but that was not to implement, or not to build or put in the entryways. So I brought it to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, they recommended that I seeked out other bids, and they definitely recommended who put in our entryways that we have right now going into the city of West Melbourne. So I spoke to Mr. Bradford, that was Don Bell Signs. I also reached out to some Parks and Rec Directors that had beautiful entryway signs that, to see who they had used, coincidentally, also Don Bell Signs. So I reached out to Don Bell Signs and got a quote for seventeen thousand five hundred per sign that includes engineering, design, and fabrication, install, and engineering of everything for the sign for a, but it was not, a non-illuminated sign. So when I brought it back to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, they had asked for one of the three signs that Don Bell has agreed to put forth to us be an illuminated sign. They also suggested that we did maybe a couple smaller signs for our smaller parks, and maybe some larger signs for our larger parks, so that maybe that would make up the difference of the price, so that it would kind of all even out in the end. So my recommendation is that we authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Don Bell Signs to develop three design options for celebrated entries to parkways. Any questions?
Mr. Francis?
I do have a question. For the community park out here on Mitten, are we actually gonna put another sign out there for that?
So we're looking at additional signage when you come off of Mitten. I mean, we have good signage on Mitten, but when you come off of Mitten on Fell and Flanagan, we're lacking, we're lacking what they call directional signage.
So that'd be two signs?
So it'd be some additional signs for the community park.
So do we need eight signs? Cause you're listing seven.
So we would need eight?
That would be eight.
So we need to change some numbers, right?
Yeah, eight, eight signs. And the, the first step with this would be for them to get some, the three design options, and take that to the park board, and then take that to the council.
And the costs are gonna be different anyhow, right?
The cost may shift as, as we get some bigger, you know, some parks don't need the big signs, some parks do.
Like Jan Leeson would obviously need a smaller sign than the community park.
So prior to the, what do you need from us tonight? Cause it sounds like you just want permission to move forward.
Yeah, we wanna move forward, we, we've had a lot of, again, pre, pre-my time here, but we've had a lot of success with this sign contractor. The, the way the entry signs worked was very simple, similar to this. They created three design options, they brought it to the council.
Just seems premature to put a number to it, right, yet?
Yeah, well, we're, we're definitely looking to move forward because we've got money in this year's budget, and so we're trying to keep this train moving forward.
At a minimal amount, but we still have to pick between the three?
Yeah, the, the council will have to, well, the Parks Advisory, the Parks Advisory Board will make their recommendation to you guys and.
I'm all for moving forward, but it just seems premature. If we're gonna bring it back anyhow, wouldn't we just vote on the money amount then?
We, we could.
Well.
We could do that, we could do it that way, we're just trying to keep this ball rolling.
Figure out how to keep it moving forward and give you a dollar amount, but we're gonna have to, that's, we just don't know what the dollar amount is.
Yeah, well, we need some kind of action from the council to authorize, cause it's over twenty-five thousand for me to enter into an agreement with them to, to bring it forward. And that's kind of the part we're stuck on. So whether we end up doing seven signs or eight signs, or maybe, maybe we only end up doing six, depending upon some of the parks that we have.
Asking us to make a decision on information we don't know yet.
We believe the signs are gonna average the seventeen and change for each park location.
So it'd be at least.
But they, but they could, they could, they could vary. I mean, we could end up seeing one.
Obviously, if they're gonna be illuminated and they gotta do electric, it's gonna be a lot more than that, so.
We, we could see the layout and go, that one really needs to be bigger, and, and then, you know, that might be additional cost, or we could go the other way. But right, right now, I need some authorization to move, to, to go with this company to move forward, to get some.
Are you looking for a motion, or just some heads nodding?
Just looking for a motion because it's over twenty-five thousand dollars, so I can't.
You're not looking for engineering plan, you're looking for, to purchase signs, right? So, I mean, how do we know we're gonna make the determination when you bring back the three sign styles to the council?
The company won't do that on a promise, right? If he does the three designs and we go, we don't like those designs, we're gonna take one of those designs to a different company, then he's out, he's out the time to design the signs.
I don't have any problems getting into an agreement with him that we will utilize him as a company, I'm not comfortable setting a number to that, though, so.
Okay, Ms. Adams?
Thank you, I have a couple questions. In terms of the different, I know you talked about different sizing based on potentially the size of the park. Based on the recommendations that we had from the engineers who had looked at Parks Master Plan, I know there was some discussion of connecting Veterans Memorial with.
Jan Leeson.
Jan Leeson, and therefore, would it necessarily be two separate parks? If it's considered, then one, it would bring us back down to the number seven rather than eight. I know that doesn't substantially change it from my understanding, but still, that's, you know, seventeen-five, so I don't know, again, are we moving, are we moving too fast trying to get signage done when it doesn't sound like we've totally cleared what our park's design is gonna look like, which could then impact signage? I don't know if you wanna answer that question first, before I go on to the others?
To combine Veterans Memorial and Jan Leeson, I think that would be kind of far down the road, cause that would mean, you know, that it would be moving this building was what they had proposed, it would be demolishing this building and connecting it to that park, kind of with the, the kind of the sports area. So I, I think that's a couple years down the road for combining these two parks, if we did do that. Depending on how long we wanted to keep the signage, I mean, I would say we're not combining those two parks for at least three to five years, if at all.
Right.
So, I mean, are you asking if we put in the cart before the horse, kind of with the signage?
I was trying to find a nice way to say it, yes?
I don't believe so, I think that, you know, this is a nice way to start our Parks Master Plan projects, and, you know, cause we do have the, the budgeted amount this year for it. I definitely think that was something that was consistently brought up in the Parks Master Plan, is that people couldn't identify our parks and didn't know where our parks were. So I don't know if we wanted to maybe hold off on the smaller Jan Leesons, and then move forward with the other seven signs, and that would, I don't know, I just, it brought unity and, to all of our parks, and it made it branded. And that is definitely something that I believe our parks need.
And I don't disagree with you. In terms of design work, knowing that these celebrated entryways are meant to be cohesive, just, just thinking from a actual application perspective, do each of the parks, if we're looking at potentially seven or eight signs, do each of these parks need a totally separate design where we're paying for each sign design of the parks?
No, so it would be one sign.
That's then duplicated, okay.
Three options to pick from.
Yeah.
Okay, that is more clear. First, for, amidst the discussion, I thought for a second we're redesigning each of the.
No, it would be one design.
That's not, that, that just doesn't seem efficient to me. Okay, and then my last question was in regards to, I know they said one of the designs would give the option for illumination. I'm not an engineer, so I can't speak for the electricity part, but doesn't it make sense that if you're going to design a sign, that we could theoretically illuminate any design?
The one thing that the Parks and Rec Advisory Board talked about is that our parks do close at dusk, so they weren't sure that we wanted to illuminate the signs if the park was closed anyway at night, cause they didn't think that if it encouraged people to come into the park at night.
Right, but I'm saying no matter which design.
Oh, could you put a.
We could illuminate it ourselves, correct?
Right, cause you could put like the can lights up on it, or you could do something like that.
Right, that's what I was thinking. So could that either, one, potentially save us money, or two, does it then broaden their design perspective if we say, well, we don't need any of them to be expressly illuminated because we can take care of illumination?
That would be a, have to be a separate bid, right, from an electrical contractor? If we took on that?
Yeah, or solar, we, we have had some luck with our sign, one of our solar entry signs. So we, we can always look at solar, if, the, the key with, the key with lighting signs is if the power's close, it's simple and easy. If there is not power close, you can spend just as much to get power to a sign than you can for the sign.
And do we know where power is located in each of our parks?
We definitely know where power is, but again.
Give me a ballpark where, for most of our parks, is it close by? Is this something we don't wanna take on?
Yes, right now, one of them is lit, the others are not, and so.
It's different in each location, correct?
Yeah, it, and it also depends on where we end up putting them, you know. So there's, there's more that needs to go into this than, than, you know, that we're, we're not presenting the final plan, we're trying to get the company on board to present the final plan for what's going, what it's going to be. And, and obviously, they can't give us that plan till they know what sign they're using. We can't tell them what sign they're using until they design some options for us to pick from, and so it's a lot of chicken or the egg, but.
A way to sign an agreement with them, committing to their company, and then they bring back the options to us?
Without losing another two weeks, no.
I'm not worried about losing two weeks, I'm worried about getting it right. Sounds like we're rushing.
We, well, we're, we're definitely gonna get it right, we, we don't do things wrong here. But as far as entering, we, we can, we can get in a agree, I'm sure they're happy to. But as far as entering, we, we can, we can get an agree, I'm sure they're happy to do an agreement on just the design, and we can, we can get that figured out and bring that back.
Okay, thank you.
If that's what the whole council wants to do.
Andrea, am I... Yes, Ms. Vols?
Okay. So if we do a contract with Don Bell for X amount of signs, whatever it is, the amount of money for each sign could be different. So I don't think that we should have a $17,500 per sign put in here, because we don't know the design or the size of the signs that we're going to be doing. So until we do that, until we look at the design and we figure out what's what, let's just do a contract that he can make up the sign and do all that, and then come back to us and tell us how much each sign is going to cost. And I think that's the best way to do it. Otherwise, we're not committing ourselves to X amount of dollars when we don't know whether we really need to spend that kind of money on maybe smaller signs that, you know, the bigger signs maybe, but maybe not the smaller ones. So I'm going to make a motion that we go ahead and improve a, a contract with Don Bell for the signs, no specifications on dollars.
All right, we have a motion from Ms. Vols, is there a second? Motion dies from last of the second.
We're, we're happy to bring back, we'll reach out to the sign company and, and put some terms together for the design, the design element.
Is this being tabled to the next meeting?
We can do that, too, but either way, no action.
Ms. Adams?
Just a quick clarification from Mr. Rhodey, because I know that we want, you know, you're, you're asking for us to put this in this year's budget, right? And that's part of the time-sensitive nature of it. Is it worth scheduling a sooner meeting than a few weeks from now? I know that would seem kind of silly for one item, but...
No, because it'll, it'll...
Is it worth considering?
Yeah, it'll, it'll take time to put that agreement together.
Would it, would it be helpful to authorize you to get in the, an amount to get a design portion of a contract with him? And maybe we could do that to speed things along, or...
If it's under 25,000, then I can do it quickly. If it's over 25,000, it's got to come to the council. So I, I just don't know what his cost would be, so... But we'll reach out to him tomorrow. They're really good to work with. We've really, you know, as far as responsiveness, they've been a really good company for us, so happy to work with them and see what we can get cooking.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Vols, did you still want to speak? Nope, okay. All right, next, next group of question, Mr. Gaylord, council reports.
Yeah, I just want to say I'm excited for tomorrow's National Night Out, and it'll be my first one, so looking forward to it.
Yeah, I think that was it, yeah. Is that it, Mr. Gaylord? All right, Ms. McGuire?
No report.
Mr. Francis?
No report.
Ms. Adams?
Just a couple of quick things. Parks and Rec held a Recreation Month event, so they put that out to the community. It was a couple of weeks ago. I know Erin, her team, did a great job. We had a couple also, I think, volunteers from the Parks and Rec Advisory Board who were also there. So it was just great to see our Rec Department offer that for our residents. I know they'd included it in the weekly roundup that went out for a little while, but just wanted to thank her team for that coordination effort. As a side note, and I don't know if you want to handle this during management reports, which is perfectly fine, or if Erin knows the answer of when we're going to be putting out. I know Heritage Day has been selected for a date. Do we know when the, the vendor table applications are going to be going out for the community? Just because I had somebody ask about it, so I wanted to bring that up. But that can be answered at any point. And then the second thing was, WeVenture and the Women's Business College at Florida Tech over the weekend just held their annual fundraiser. And if you're not familiar with WeVenture and the work that they do, they support female entrepreneurs and professional women specifically here in both Brevard, but also they have some connections through the Indian River County as well. They specifically want to support women as they get into business and, and starting up local businesses and things like that. So they did a great job from a whole team perspective, really not only engaging with the community, but I think it was a successful fundraiser. They haven't announced what that final number is yet. But I know that they had representation from across Brevard, and West Melbourne was mentioned during part of their presentation, because people were commenting on businesses that were here in our community. So I thought that was pretty, pretty cool. And just a reminder, we do have the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference that's coming up. If you signed up for the policy committees, they will be meeting during that time. The previous year's committee will be meeting to have a closing, kind of like a recap of what that committee had accomplished. And then the new committees moving forward will be meeting during that time as well. So just wanted to send a reminder for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vols? Oh, Mr. Bentley isn't here. Here I am looking, no refer for him. I, so I just wanted to talk about Hollywood Estates. I was over there last, over the weekend for their Toys for Tots kickoff, and that was a very nice event. So if we would like to take an unwrapped toy for the Toys for Tots, they are collecting them in their clubhouse over there. I also wanted to mention regarding the situation that they spoke about tonight, is I have been over there numerous times, had numerous conversations regarding the same issue. And they are a volunteer HOA, and they're, the, the board changes quickly, and then each board has a different thing that they want to do. At this point right now, their sign that they have out there, as you drive by, they want to illuminate that sign. So one of the persons that lives right there at the corner is an electrician, and he's going to run power from his house, which he certainly can do. He has to get a permit and all this, correct? We spoke about this, I've been in talking to Mr. Rhodey about this several times. So he certainly can do that, and he's currently the HOA president, but we don't know for how long. So the plants and things that they have put in there, that they have planted, they planted out of the expense of their own pocket, whoever happens to be doing it at the time. But if we go in there and we just mow, and we mow over some of these Florida native plants, and there's a couple palm trees and stuff, I know our guys don't want to go in there and mow around a bunch of plants, because you don't really know what's a weed and what's a plant. We just want to mow. So this could be a, a very touchy, touchy thing, because you, you have this group, which was here, which I've spoken with them many times, but then you have the other group, and then there's a third group. So it has been like this since I moved here in 2002. It has always been like this, so we just, we have to really be careful how we go ahead with this. I really would like to get this settled once and for all, so that it's on record, and then any further HOAs that come up have a guidance, have something to go with.
Andrea, I know, we both know, but can you explain, when you say volunteer HOA board, they're all volunteer, but this is a little unique, because...
It never was an HOA to begin with, it wasn't built as an HOA.
There's a property owner, and each, each house sits on there, and they joined in and made an HOA that doesn't collect a lot of dues or anything.
Right, that kind of an HOA, that kind, that's a whole different thing, yes. But as far as being a real HOA...
It's a little unique on...
It is. And then there's the owner, the other owner, TNW, that's a whole different thing. And I know Mr. Rhodey's just dying to comment on this.
I am, I am happy, yeah, I, I'm happy to put some information together and work with the city attorney. We, I think I, I speak for probably past city ministers and city managers as well. You know, we, we put ourselves in a tough spot, the city did, when we worked with Hollywood Estates and the county to get the entrance off of Hollywood, which was much safer and much better for the community. There was a lot of frustration from Hollywood Estates over moving that entrance. And part of that deal was we bought two units and we put the road on Henry, so that they could have their ingress, egress on Henry. And as part of that, we own those two lots, which are now the roads in and out. And so I'm happy to, you know, at the end of the day, what I think both parties, I would think are looking for, them and us, is just some clear direction. We, we don't want to mow this month and not mow next month, and do this two months from now, and then undo it. So we're, we're happy to put something together to try to, you know, get this more traditional, that maybe it's, maybe it's just a, you know, maybe we give that property over to them, and we just have the road easement, and we take care of the road. We, we take care of roads really well, we don't take care of landscaping really well. We, we, we know how to cut grass, but when it comes to wildflowers and all kinds of different stuff, that's not really our forte. We're, we either cut it, spray it, or pave it, so...
Are we going to be able to do that, though? Turn over the property, turn over the road access to them, to who?
We have a very good agreement in place for the memorial that's there. So I don't know if we can just expand that a little bit, but we'll have to try to find some solutions that, we, we don't want, we don't want this for everybody, right? Because I assure you, the other side of, as, as Mayor Young mentioned, the other side of this discussion is just as passionate about what is there. And we don't want, we don't, we don't want that group coming to the next meeting, and then the third group coming to the meeting after that. We, we want to try to get, try to get this resolved. And it really should just be Hollywood Estates, you know, discussion. It should be a, their discussion, and not really a, you know, come to the city council to try to get their side. So we're, we're happy to try to put something together and put this to bed.
All right, thank you. That's the end of my report, thank you. So, management reports?
So I, I will ask the chief to come up, while he's coming up, to give a, a once-over for tomorrow. I'll answer Councilwoman Adams' question, which is, we just had a, a staff meeting to finalize and lock in all the Hollywood, or all the Heritage Days, Hollywood Estates, Heritage Days information, and so we'll be putting out our flyers and getting all our vendor information up on the web, so we can get that event going really well.
Sir, so we're excited to host the annual National Night Out again tomorrow, and I believe all you are going to be participating. So we're going to be going to five communities, and we will be, we plan to wrap by about 8 o'clock tomorrow night. So we kind of have our timeline laid out. So if you're joining us, if you can meet us over at the police department at 4:45, we'll brief right at 4:45, and then by 5 o'clock, we'll be heading out. So we'll get you your car, car assignments and who you're riding with, and then we'll hit the town. So, any questions about that?
Good.
Okay, look forward to it.
I do have a question. When we've gone before, we've had bags with little stickers and tchotchkes and little gift certificates from McDonald's. We didn't have those last time. Are we not doing that anymore?
Like for, for kids instead?
For the kids, when we get out.
Yeah, we'll bring some of that stuff along, and then we do have a recognition for each community that we're going to, that will present a certificate of participation for being a part of it.
Okay, well, I must have been in the vehicle that we ate it. We were, we were, we stopped along the way and ate them.
Bring your appetite still.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
So just responding to the Hollywood Estates thing, I'll certainly look into the documents. It sounds pretty clear that, that we own the property, so there's not going to be any legal issue with maintaining it. I do want to make sure, though, that the original agreement where they took it over wasn't part of a bargain, where, you know, they took over that, and we took over something else, and then we're, you know, now doing both ends of it. So I'll look into that, though, and work with the, the staff in making sure that there aren't any issues like that. And other than that, I'll see you tomorrow.
All right, thank you. Anything else for the good of the, I don't have, oh, Ms. Adams, I have a light on.
I will be, I will be quick, I promise. Just three things for Mr. Rhodey, sir, if you don't mind. The first one, just a quick note of appreciation based on all of, answering all of my calls and questions regarding the sidewalks on Mitten Road. For those that have seen the work that's continuing, residents were very concerned about students safely walking to school, and with the start of school right around the corner, he has assured me those sidewalks will be completed, and they look like they're just about there, which is great.
Your video was very good, too.
I did want to recognize him, just because I know I've kind of been a bugger about that, so I appreciate that. The second thing is the city, if you haven't seen them, the city is working on some other painted crosswalks, that those, that program.
Right out here, on your way out, if you go out?
Take a look at them, I think they're beautiful. I, I was really pleased with them, so again, just wanted to say thank you. The third thing, because you always start with a positive, and then you get to your questions. I know it's not technically our jurisdiction, but it affects West Melbourne. The 192 work, in terms of the, the level congruency, have we heard any feedback from the, the contractors who are working on that?
Are they working on it?
I continue to get residents who ask about it, and, you know, nicely complain about what the city is doing about it, and I try to explain that that's not our project, but they continue to ask. So I didn't know if we have made the request, or if they've basically told us that they will get to it when they get to it. I was just wondering.
The, the positives for the 192 project right now is they did stake 192 every 50 feet for elevation, which is a really good sign that the paving is coming. That's the, kind of the last thing you do to make sure you get your paving right, so the road pitches. So I, I feel like we're really close, but I, I, along with many other residents, do not notice anybody working. And it's really hard to get a project done when there's no crew or equipment working. So we have inquired several times, the crew that is doing 192, the paving, is also the crew that's doing 95. So I don't know if 95 became a higher priority and they got pulled, but we will double our efforts to try to get some dates as to when the paving will be completed. Because from my perspective, they've now done all the crosswalk work, they're just, it just needs to be paved and, and paved and striped, so we're getting there.
And the paving should address the level congruency?
Yeah, they, they, they paved all the turn lanes, which is great, except for that causes a real issue traveling. And so once they pave the travel lanes and pitch them to the, to the, pitch them to the curbs, it should be a very, you know, it's going to be a quality job. I have no doubt the state is going to leave us with a, a quality 192. They just, I don't know when.
Thank you, sir.
And I wish I had an answer for you, because it's gone way too long.
Thank you.
Thank you. And on the subject of schools, I wanted to say thank you very much. That I saw that was on Wingate with the, with the monuments, with, for the schools, it's now gone. You can't even tell it was even there, it is so much better.
Well, that's a kudos to you, mayor, for poking the school district and having them take care of their property, so that's a kudos to you.
You may call, so I thank you, but it's...
It's a kudos to you, mayor.
Ugly for a long time. Ms. Vols, did you have something?
Yeah, I, I just had a question. Do you happen to know what those big goofy lights are for? The ones that are not the traffic lights?
Those are from my end, well...
Oh, boy.
I'll let Mr. Rhodey...
Those are pedestrian, mid-block pedestrian crosswalks.
That's what I thought.
The, the state's effort to increase pedestrian safety up and down 192.
Oh, that's just wonderful.
Okay, that's right, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned.